All right. Seven o'clock. Seven oh one, we can go.
You're live.
Thanks. Good to go?
Yep.
All right. All right. Town of Groveland, welcome. This is the planning board meeting on Tuesday, September twenty-fourth at seven PM in the town hall. Entertain a motion to open the meeting.
So motioned. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right. First up on the agenda, zoning changes for 2025. We are going to discuss possible zoning changes for the Springtown meeting in 2025. It'll be here soon enough. First up is the medical marijuana production change that we're looking for. We have our current bylaws in the packet and we have a draft warrant article here to read through, if you guys have read through it or not. But Angus is here to talk through a little bit. Let me make sure you have a mic. Hold on. Hold on one second. Green, you're on.
Excellent. Thanks very much. I'm sure Sam will need this later in the meeting as well. So Angus Jennings, I'm a Groveland resident member of the Economic Development Committee. And this idea really came from some outreach that was made to the town administrator's office in the last six months or so. I can't remember exactly, but she was contacted by a prospective, a representative of someone who was interested in potentially developing a marijuana production facility here in town for recreational, not for medicinal. So she looked into it and I looked into it and the bylaws right now don't allow that. They only allow that for medicinal. So, you know, she advised the representative and obviously they didn't go any further and they presumably went to another town. So that got me thinking as a member of the Economic Development Committee. It's not a big thing in terms of revenue, but it is a potential business opportunity. So I wanted to approach the board to see, given what's gone on in the last couple of years in terms of, I guess, the normalization of that industry. I know the bylaws right now are written to allow production and cultivation for medicinal, not for recreational. So I wanted to float the idea if that was something the board was open to seeing change, it seems like it would be, you know, something that could go to town meeting. So I took the liberty of drafting what those amendments may look like. And just to be clear, the way it's written would, the intent anyway, would be to allow for cultivation and basically processing, but not retail for recreational. So it would seem from a community impact standpoint, I wouldn't think that would be any different than a medicinal, since you're not talking retail. So anyhow, my intent tonight is really to get input from the planning board as to whether that's a policy direction you would favor. If so, I would think the next step would be to get language vetted. And I did note in an email I had sent to the town planner last night, there may be, there may be other related amendments needed if the town did want to pursue that. So that's something that would obviously have to be reviewed by town council. I specifically note section fifty dash seven point six, marijuana establishments prohibited. The way that section of the bylaw is written references the town meeting vote. So I don't know whether, what, how important that is or what the mechanism would be to change that, if that would be, or actually referenced a ballot vote. So I don't know if that's something that requires another ballot vote. That's a whole other can of worms. You know, part of why I started my comments with kind of where this began was to illustrate that it was really intended as like a simple fix. If it balloons into something that's much bigger than that, that's, that's obviously something that, you know, would need to be reconsidered. The other thing is I was doing some research on this on the Cannabis Control Commission and where the state has adopted regulations more recent than the town's bylaw, including but not necessarily limited to a social equity businesses, which is, you know, in the acts of 2022. Based on my reading of that, it looks like there's some additional requirements the state has imposed for communities with host community agreements with marijuana establishments. So if that's the case, that could be another thing that if this is referred to town council, they may say, hey, if you're touching the bylaw, you also need to do X, Y, and Z. That may go beyond the, you know, scope of what you guys are interested in. So really my intent tonight is just to hear from you as to what, you know, what direction you'd like to see on a policy level. And then fortunately, since we are talking about Springtown meeting, if it is something you want to pursue, there's a good amount of time between now and, you know, late winter to firm up the details.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
So in the packet on the back of the agenda, there is some details around the surrounding towns, number of establishments, what they allow. It gives a definition of what the marijuana retailer is, marijuana cultivator, marijuana establishment. And then it also gives the jurisdictions with towns, what boards own the aspect of it and contact info for any questions if we wanted to reach out, which I kind of plan on it. If Angus, if you don't have, I have just a couple of random questions. But also I know that this was all kind of stemmed prior to Rebecca getting the phone call. We were having an EDIC meeting and we were like, hey, let's come up with some ideas on how we can bring some town, the town some extra revenue and, you know, alleviate some of our issues. And I knew that one of, one of the things was in asking, talking to Rebecca, that we only had the American marijuana as medicinal and not recreational. So we just throw, we spitballing ideas out there and then in comes someone to ask questions because that's just the way it works. It's masked around the entire state now. They're everywhere. Georgetown has two, Raleigh has three. Ipswich says one, but is it CBD only? What's, I don't know, CD plus only? I wasn't sure Angus, if you, if you knew what that meant. It says Ipswich has one establishment, but it provides CBD plus only.
Oh, I don't know.
No, okay. But it just, it just shows everyone's on the board. You can look at it. My personal opinion is the fact that it's been established throughout the state, more so there's a lot of more regulations around it that I'm all for putting it back in front of the people and let the people decide. That's just my personal opinion. Whether I agree with it or not, disagree with it, doesn't matter. It's up to the town to make that decision. So that's my upfront answer Angus is I'm all for it. Let, let the town vote and go from there. And we have to see what we have to do with the verbiage around bylaws and how in-depth we have to go. Anyone else have any comments?
I would tend to agree with you. I think, you know, from my perspective, I think, you know, the state has enough experience with it now to, you know, that we can get a good feel as to what it's meant to be different communities of different sizes, what that impact has been on a few different levels. But I agree. I think they are putting it in front of the town for a vote. I think it's, is good at this point because I think probably something that should be looked at either way every once in a while.
What's the benefit to the town?
Potential businesses in town, potential little boost to the tax economy, the tax base rather. I mean, again, I don't think it's going to be, you know, a windfall.
I don't think it's going to be huge, right?
I don't think it's going to be a windfall, but it's, you know, revenue that we don't have now.
When they first started, they were putting out millions for like playgrounds and.
Right. I mean, there was a lot of PR that went with that too, right? So, yeah.
And that was actually one of, I had two questions around it. And Angus, I'm not sure if you knew it. If not, I was going to reach out to the surrounding towns. But is there any knowledge or do you any research around what revenue the towns are bringing in approximately based on these dispensaries? Have you?
No, I haven't. Nope.
I get it.
Happy to look into it.
I can, and I can do that as well. I'm just interested to see what kind of revenue they're, they're gaining from that. And then the other question was around any type of safety concerns, right? I know that's always a thing in the big, years ago, prior to this all coming, everyone said, you know, there's safety issues, right? What kind of people are going to come to these dispensaries? And what are they going to be, you know, that kind of thing? So just asking what, any, are there any concerns around the establishments? But we, we know if anyone's been to one of these dispensaries, they are gated. The one over on Raleigh, you can't even get in there. I mean, it's, there's hundreds of feet before you can even get in through the gates. Prior to that, there's cameras everywhere. They have, they have quite a setup and they're all, they're all over now. So Haverhill has a few.
Might want to talk to the chief and see.
Yeah.
What perimeter see.
Yep.
You know, what he thinks about it.
Yeah, I think as we get, as we get further into it, that's definitely things that we have to look into. But I guess, anyone else have their opinion on it?
Yeah, well, I think about the safety. I think the, the biggest safety benefit is going to be to the end user because now that it's legalized and it's actually regulated, the end user is going to end up with the product that's safer. You don't have to worry about it having things in it that it shouldn't. I mean, that's with a lot of things. I think when you look at the town in general and the feedback that I see online, a lot of people regret missing that initial boat. I'm not necessarily sure it's a good thing or a bad thing, but I do know that in terms of the revenue that they originally created, some of that was put aside for those safety concerns. And if you look at some of the lawsuits that have followed from the marijuana companies to like Haverhill, they've displayed over the last couple of years that there hasn't been any significant increase to crime or safety issues. And so they've lessened the amounts that they have to pay towards that.
Where do you put it?
That we, I don't think that's the discussion we have to have. It's more of put the bylaw in to be able to, and then figure it out from there. Right. Like where are you going to put it is.
I would think something, somebody would want to know where it's going.
But it's, this isn't for, this particular, isn't for a specific business. This is just for the availability of some company that does want, if they ever want to come in. We have a lot of land here that's, especially in the industrial area, that if they could, they could use. We don't know where, but it would assume it would be industrial. So that's my, that's my take on it. I think get the bylaw. Right now they can't even talk to us because there's no bylaw. So who knows how long that's going to take and all the details around it.
I have a question or two. I noticed in the, in the article, it's, it specifically omits retail. Is that intentional?
You know, I'm pretty new to town. I didn't know what the temperature was. So I figured start with something that was very modest because I think from a cultivation or processing, it's already allowed by special permit for medicinal. So changing that to allow for retail seems like it would honestly, like no one would even know. Once you get into dispensaries, that's a, that's a different thing. So I, you know, if that was something the board was favorable to, or you thought town meeting ought to consider that, that's something that could be woven in. But I, I felt like, you know, baby steps.
Right. Would, would it make sense to try to get some information about where they have retail? What sort of numbers they do as well?
Yes. We have some of that. Angus, on the back here, the X is me that they have that availability, right? George, because Georgetown has.
I, I didn't, that's not something I put together.
That's from.
Awesome. Thank you.
I know Georgetown has, has a couple, Raleigh has a couple.
And, and as far as general thoughts, I'm always of the mind that it's better to have options and then be able to consider them and make decisions based on them than to not have options and be sort of shoehorned into a particular position. So given that it seems that the town is somewhat behind the curve with some of the neighboring towns, you know, an article saying that you can potentially buy a special permit, maybe do some, you know, maybe do some of these things, it certainly seems, certainly seems appropriate. But I would, I would echo, I would echo DJ's sentiments about, you know, we put in front of the town and I would be supportive of it, at least, you know, to have the option to consider it, you know, which is several steps down the road from like low, you know, putting a brick and mortar place in place. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think putting appropriate controls around it, obviously, you know, do the special permit process, you know, gives us that ability to have that control around it. But in general, you know, I'm just, I'm in favor of not limiting business as much as we cannot limit business. Right? Again, obviously where that limitation needs to happen, when we first looked at this as a, as a community, they needed to be under, more understanding of what it was now. I think, I think as a greater community, you know, statewide, we have that. But I think, you know, as long as we are keeping some guardrails around it, I think we should be okay. At least to explore it and make it an option.
Yeah, and I, I think that this, for this instance here, it's just about getting to next steps and going from there. I think we're all in the majority anyway. Not whether you're for or against, but I think we're at least, it's not up to us up here to say that. It's up to the town.
Right.
We can go, we're all four going to the next steps. So that's would be my next, Rebecca, for us, is there next steps? What our involvement would be for building that? Is, is it all on Angus? Does it go to you? Is it on us? How does that?
So I think it would be beneficial for us to confer with town council as to clearing up some of the legal questions that were brought forward as part of the initial research from Angus and the Economic Development Committee and presenting that to the board so that you understand what would need to be done in order for something to move forward. And then after that, we can start to get more into whether or not we're drafting language, whether or not we need to do a ballot vote first, whether or not there's other things that need to be done prior to us considering. So I would hope that the board would allow me to, to consult with town council and present those findings.
Yep. Do we need to make that a motion to do that or that something would prove over right away?
I'm happy to move that Rebecca can move forth and vet this out in a, in a appropriate way.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Noted?
It doesn't happen often. It's just, I just think there's.
Pass. So move. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right. Next up is the accessory dwelling units, compliance with Mass. General Law. Sam is here to have a long, lengthy conversation about it all. All right. Sam, I haven't had dinner yet. Is this on TV on the screen? Oh, boy. I didn't bring my copy.
Years ago.
Yeah. All right. Well, I'm going to go over here just so I can see. I had printed a copy for myself, but left it in my office. Anyway, a few weeks ago, the pass, the Affordable Homes Act passed into law, giving us a number of changes. One of the biggest ones is to forty-eight three, which is our state zoning. This is the same section that has the MBTA housing, has some of our Dover amendment protections, and now has an as of right ADU. These slides are really ugly, but I broke it down into highlights because each piece of the sentence has a specific meaning. I've been dealing with a number of building official organizations. I'm in discussions with the EO HLC, which is. He was talking if you want to put on the big screen. Oh. If you want to. That's all good. I'm good. I just, you know, needed glasses if I was going to use this one. But they are the board, it's the economic, EO, Economic Office of Housing and Livable Conditions, who the governor in her law gave the authority to give guidance on the bill. As of right now, they have not issued guidance. So I am working along with my counterparts for, from the building official organizations in Massachusetts with the deputy director of EO HLC to come up with some guidance in exchange for some information from building officials. But on a what's coming aspect, there's really two sections in the bill, which is about a hundred and thirty pages. It's very long. I read it. I don't recommend reading it. But it is long, but this, this is going to have a, a huge impact on us, probably as much or more so than the MBTA communities. Because this is much more achievable and affordable for your average citizen, you know, to build a small ADU. So section one of forty-eight is your definitions. Oh, that's, that is way better. Thank you, IT guys. So the definition of accessory dwelling unit, despite what we may have in our local zoning, is now going to be changed if we want to continue to call it an accessory dwelling unit. The first part of that, and each one of these sections that I highlighted has a different impact and that's why I wanted to highlight it. So a self-contained housing unit, including sleeping, cooking, sanitary facilities on the same lot as the principal dwelling. So this is one of the first questions we come up to is it just talks about it being on the same lot. It doesn't indicate whether they truly mean attached or detached. The general consensus is either or because it's on the same lot. They also don't say that it has to be on a lot and accessory to a single-family dwelling. It just says on a lot, and I'll get to that in a sec. So subject to otherwise applicable dimensional and parking requirements. In the act itself, on the next slide, we'll go over what those are. Maintains a separate entrance either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor shared with the principal dwelling sufficient to meet the requirements of the state building code for safe egress. So these are true independent dwelling units. And one thing to keep in mind, and it's something we're trying to get the state to clarify with inspectors, is the building code is completely separate from zoning and the building code does not identify accessory dwelling units, only dwelling units. So you can still have a guest suite above your garage that comes down into your house, share same egresses, those types of things. A true in-law apartment where, again, you're, you're sharing same maybe kitchens, baths, you know, that shared facility. But once you go into a dwelling unit that has its own egress, its own sleeping, bathing and sanitary facilities, it's a, it's a separate dwelling unit. We have to treat it as such. There's some difficulties with that because some cities and towns put into place requirements that would conflict with the building code and you can't do that through zoning. So things like if I had a detached unit, I couldn't run my power through the main house out to the detached unit like I would to a garage. And that causes some difficulty if I'm converting a garage to an ADU because now to run it off of that service is no longer compliant. This is now a separate house on the lot by the building code. On the zoning, it's called a ADU, but it's, it's a separate dwelling unit. It's a house. So the other criteria, not larger in gross floor area than half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling unit or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. So you can do up to nine hundred square feet. If you had a twelve hundred square foot ranch, your largest you could get was six hundred square feet. The issue with this as well is if your definition isn't, is conflicts with this on what an accessory dwelling unit, like here, I believe we're at a thousand square feet. We need to figure out what to call, if we want to continue to allow a thousand square foot accessory dwelling units, what to call them. Because under state law now, they are no longer an accessory dwelling unit by definition. So that's something we're going to have to address. Subject to such additional restrictions, including but not limited additional size restrictions, restrictions are prohib, prohibitions on short-term rentals.
Let me go back one sec because I just want to make sure I understand.
Sure, sure.
The, so the idea would be maybe that there'd be a third category of something that ADUs are by right and then this additional thing that has a higher square footage potential would be something different.
Yes.
That we would consider differently and not necessarily by right.
Correct. And those we can regulate through special permits and have the different requirements that would not be allowed on an ADU. So some people.
So it's just a language change for the, for that particular category of things here currently?
Correct. So we could either bring our bylaw into compliance with the state.
To, to narrow it down to nine hundred.
Just say, hey, we're just going to do this. Or we could have a separate category. Some cities and towns are looking at calling it something like a large ADU.
Okay.
You know, it, but it has to be defined differently than what the state definition of ADU is because it is no longer an ADU by definition.
That, that's helpful.
Yeah. So it's, it's a little confusing, but yeah, what, really the big question is what do you call it?
Right, right. No, thank you very much.
Not an ADU, I guess.
Sure.
So, and then no municipality shall unreasonably restrict the creation or rental of an accessory dwelling unit. So one of the problems we have is we don't have a definition of what is reasonable at this point. We have a rough idea. We have some consensus, which I have some slides from different councils that have weighed in. I think we have some things we definitely know, we agree on, and then there's a bunch of stuff we just don't know. So. And short-term rentals, I'm not going to go into because neither here nor West Newbury deals with short-term rentals, so we can jump that. So another ugly slide. This is the body of the, of section three that they added. So no zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit, unreasonably restrict or require a special permit or other discretionary zoning for the use of land or structures for a single-family accessory dwelling unit or rental thereof in a single-family residential zoning district. Seems pretty simple at save, at face value, but once you start getting into this, it gets a little confusing because again, we don't know what is a reasonable restriction, which they talk about in the green highlighted section that you may be subject to reasonable regulations. That's some of the guidance we're trying to get from EO HLC. And then we cannot require a special permit, although we can require site plan review. But I don't, one of the questions is really what are you looking at at site plan review if the structure meets your dimensional requirements? So one of the questions is how, how detailed the site plan review can you ask for and still be considered reasonable? So green section, again, we talked about, subject to reasonable regulations, one of the big questions everyone asks is Title V. You know, can you, you know, tell someone they can't have an ADU if they can't meet your Title V requirements for septic? Yes. You have to meet all your health sanitary regulations. You have to meet all building codes. Again, zoning and building is separate. This is a separate house. You need to meet the requirements of a separate house on the lot, whether it's attached or detached. So things that are brought up in the act, it talks about dimensional requirements, setbacks, bulk and height of the structures. Those seem pretty common as to agreed upon what we can do because it's called right out in the act. One of the big things that they took away from us is the ability to require owner occupancy of either unit. People have mixed feelings on this. One of the, the reasons I like this is typically if you have an owner occupied property, it tends to be better maintained. You don't have someone that's just buying property, renting and walking away. As long as their rent comes in, they're good. So that is definitely concerning. And then they get into parking. We can only ask that one additional parking space be required. And if you're within half mile of a, basically commuter rail station, subway station, we can require zero parking. So I don't think we really have to worry about that. I don't think we're within a half a mile of any of those. So, and typically one is what we'd ask for anyway. So for more than one accessory dwelling unit, if we decide to do that, you can require special permits. I don't know of many towns that allow multiple accessory dwelling units. And then the last part is EO HLC may issue guidelines. And again, as of yet, they have not issued guidelines. I'm, I was very pleased to get the call from them, looking for some feedback so that we can try to develop something. So. So those two slides are really, that's it. There's not a lot of language, but this is causing a ton of confusion. And the next slide, if you could, is pretty much.
Sam, excuse me.
Yep, sure.
Just a real quick, it mentions, it references three ten CMR fifteen there. Can you, what is that?
Uh, that's your, your sanitary requirements.
Okay.
Yep.
So it ties that into, that's an example of what's reasonable.
Yeah, Title V. Again, you got to meet your building codes and sure. So what we know takes effect two-two-twenty-five. Local bylaws are in effect until then. Two-two is a Sunday, so really Monday is when we're off and running. ADUs of fifty percent of the primary dwelling, we talked about nine hundred square feet allowed by right or half what is existing. The question that comes up is it talks about allowed by right in a single-family district. The general consensus is that that is any district that would allow a single family by right. Seems reasonable. The problem with that is as. The problem with that is as you move forward with that definition, it doesn't say single-family dwelling. So now if I have a two-family in a single-family district, can I have an ADU? The general consensus out there is leaning towards, and it's on my next slide, is leaning towards yes. Anything that's going to create housing, if it's ambiguous, uh, most councils are leaning towards probably that's what they're looking for. It's a little scary. Anyway, we'll get to that slide in a sec. ADU is a complete dwelling unit, separate dwellings. Uh, we talked about that, regulate um, site plan review. The um, the question again is beyond what they give us directly in the law, what is reasonable? Uh, can't require owner occupancy, can't limit the ADU to an in-law or a relative. You can't limit the number of bedrooms. Title five can, although granted in 900 square feet, you're probably not getting more than two bedrooms comfortably. You can't limit the number of occupants. That gets a little scary. Uh, the only time you can is when that becomes a health regulation and there are limitations in the health code as to how many people can be in so many square feet before it's considered um, an issue. So if you have a family of 10 trying to squeeze in a 900 square foot dwelling, we, we can take action. Yeah. So we talked about the parking, special permit if more than one on a lot. Special permit for a, or a variance for an ADU that doesn't meet the definition under the act. And then we can regulate uh, or prohibit short-term rentals. And the thing we keep pounding into our inspectors is ADU under the building code is a dwelling unit and needs to be treated as such. Why this is such a big deal is in the past, this was glazed over considerably across the state that they were just ADUs. So we'll just consider it part of the single family and a lot of these don't have proper fire separation, proper utility separation. And that's a bit scary that I'm finding out as we go through all this, because they were looking at it as an ADU to a single family in a zone that possibly under zoning didn't allow a two-family. So they're going, well, I can't allow a two-family, I'll call it an ADU. So where it's not a two, I'm going to treat it as a single and not fire separated. That is completely wrong. Um, and now it's even, even more wrong. So uh, it's a little, going backwards is going to be troublesome. Next. So this we don't know, but the general consensus coming back is ADUs allowed on the same lot as a principal dwelling, both attached and detached. Act doesn't give us the direction, but again, the guidance we're getting from above and from our councils that I've heard so far, uh, has been, it would point that that's the intent. Uh, same thing with being placed on a non-conforming lot. So if you have a non-conforming lot, the act doesn't prohibit you from having an ADU. So, cause you're in a single-family residential district. So, and they don't limit that minimum size lot. So we don't know what the minimum is. Uh, existing in-law and ADU zoning or special condi- uh, conditions can remain in effect until 2/2/25. Uh, at that point, like we have a requirement for uh, people to kind of re-up or re-validate their ADUs upon sale. If they meet the definition of an ADU, I can no longer ask them to, to provide that info. Now it's just as of right. So existing uh, conditions uh, will expire on 2/2. Any that don't meet the requirements of the act. So if I have a thousand square foot that was permitted under our current zoning, we can continue to collect those documents if we see fit or continue to regulate owner occupancy, those, those things. Uh, again, that's general consensus, but these are the questions we want EO HLC to answer. Uh, again, we want them to answer what's a single-family residential zoning district. Uh, again, it seems like everyone agrees that it's any district that allows a single family. The problem we have with that is then we have questions like if I have a business district with a single-family home in it, is that now an as-of-right to add that? And again, the general consensus there is no, because now you're putting enough, an additional non-conforming use in a district that may not allow single-family dwelling. So it's, it gets, like I said, it gets a, a bit confusing as you go along. And then uh, second ADUs we talked about, you can add that if we decide to. I don't think we'll be going there anytime soon. And we can't require the ADU to be affordable, which is funny considering it's the Affordable Homes Act. But that is not a criteria. They can opt to, uh, but we can't make that a requirement. So, next slide. And then the last uh, is what we don't know. Uh, big problems is they talk about 900 square feet gross floor area. Uh, no definitions given. And I have two towns that have vastly different um, definitions. One says it's just outside dimensions, that's it. One says it's your outside dimensions minus storage, garage, hallways, bathrooms, those types of things. So you can have a considerably larger structure and still meet the requirements of gross floor area. So what would be nice to have is prior to this going into effect, is the state step in with a definition and say, this is what we mean. Uh, and then anything outside of that, if we want to go larger, again, we then can follow our old regulations and potentially get special permits or whatever else is needed.
Does that, is that called out in our current bylaw for?
Yes. So we have a gross square footage definition as well as a requirement. And it is again, just different than uh-
What is ours?
Ours is the outside dimensions, I believe.
So hallways and all that stuff is included in our situation where it might not be in somebody else's?
So essentially it's footprint versus livable space.
Yeah. And then the question is, well, now what if I want to, I have a attached ADU and I want to do an attached garage to the existing structure? If it enters through the ADU, is it part of the ADU? If they share it, is it part of the ADU? So we don't know how to, how to deal with all these little nuances of what is it and what do we count? I think reasonable people will come in and go, you know, this is what we really are envisioning, but we don't have that defined yet. So-
So you're going to be able to take a lot that was non-conforming for a house, but you can get a septic in it, in a 900 square foot and call it a?
Not if the lots, so ADU has to be accessory under zoning. So if it's an empty lot that was non-conforming, that doesn't have a single family on it, you could not put an accessory dwelling unit. Cause then that's a primary dwelling unit.
Are there any lot size restrictions on there as far as what can I call it the ADU?
Again, general consensus right now is uh, the state minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet with 50 feet of frontage, but even that's been questioned because again, it's not mentioned in the act.
He might ask question.
So-
So there's no setbacks to this either? Besides 15-foot frontage?
Nope. They do allow you to regulate setbacks. So where our zoning has a 15 on the sides and rear, 30 in the front, you would most likely have to meet that. And the reason I say most likely, again, you have that section three protections and some of the questions come up that if you can't feasibly fit it within the setbacks, is it reasonable to still regulate them? And then could I violate those setbacks?
That would be a hardship, wouldn't it?
Maybe. You know, and, and that's the problem. So you've got an as-of-right that I'm going to tell you, you can't meet a setback. So, and, and the Dover amendment protections usually give you something reasonable and you'd have to have a pretty good reason probably to violate that. But again, I wouldn't call it off the table, but those are more of the questions we need to find out that, is that an always condition or is that an in most cases condition?
So the unenveloped task that you have is take a look at all these things that talk about reasonable and then try to define them in, you know, what would be a proposed new bylaw?
Yes.
Subject to getting all the information you can from like local towns and you know, what, what everybody sort of takes as consensus and then sort of putting that in addition to what is like physically required by the state.
So week before last, um, we had a meeting with the departments and initially my feeling was let's go ahead, you know, take some action. Then it was the, well, let's pump the brakes. Now after more information, I think coming to a spring town meeting with at least something that addresses ADUs as defined, is having that in place. And if we wanted to find something outside of that, we can as well. But I think having a conflicting bylaw is probably going to be bad practice.
Hmm.
Um, and I, I think it's going to cause confusion and some problems where we can probably reasonably regulate the ADUs that are smaller than our current, no longer ADU, ADUs.
Right, right, right. So the, so the sort of approach is a stepped approach where you think get something in front of the town that is compliant with what the, with what the state wants and then from there, as things happen, as enforcement happens, as you sort of figure out how these things play out in real time with real people, like then adjust the bylaw to sort of fit those things?
Pretty much. I, I think the, the first step is we're hoping to get some answers from the state.
Of course.
And say, okay, you, you gotta give us guidance here, guys.
Additional definitions or you know, or work guidelines or-
We're just making stuff up and that's going to lead to lawsuits. And yes, that's a way to find a definitive answer, but that's not where we want to be.
Hundred percent.
Um, so yes, hoping we get some answers, then we develop a bylaw and whether that was retracting our entire ADU bylaw now and just putting a new one in with a smaller ADU and coming back later with a larger or doing a combination of both.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's really more the, um, we definitely got to think about it with the information that's coming out, which is why I'm here tonight, to just give you kind of a rundown and give you our general direction. So as we start developing this and feeding you the information, you're not going, I, you know, this is new to me. I haven't looked at it and I didn't have a chance to read the 130 pages and find this in there.
No, we appreciate all your diligence in this and know it's a huge job and, and very thankless.
It's, it's been a lot and we, we keep coming up with more and more questions. Um, you know, as I, I meet with other inspectors, zoning enforcement officials, uh, state officials, we're just, the intent is create housing, which it certainly will, but that, that left us with really a big void of how do we deal with this increase in housing through our regulations?
And how do you match it up with the zone, with the building requirements?
Well, and that's it. And on top of that, we got a new building code coming out beginning of the year, which changes some of the definitions of what things are.
Sure.
So that just really, as someone that wears both hats, to have words mean new things is really tough to swallow.
Understand.
Well, it's hard in the word, I mean, make it intentionally vague that we cast the widest net out of the gate and then.
Yeah. So a few other things that we had questions on, um, there were questions regarding, uh, again, we talked about the single-family residential zoning dis- district. Can an ADU be added to an existing single family that had a prior in-law or ADU that no longer meets the definition of an ADU because they haven't got an ADU? If that makes any sense? Because by definition, it is not an ADU. Now it's just a, potentially a two-family under the building code. It's unidentified under zoning. Can I now do a detached ADU in my backyard if I had an in-law? And we don't know. I mean, reasonable person, you know, I, I think my reasonable take on that is no.
Yeah.
You've, you've had that opportunity, that was the intent, but it doesn't say you can't. And the way that it's written, we're getting conflicting reports from council and from state agencies depending on what their goal is. If your goal is to create housing, they're going, yes, absolutely. If it's a different goal, then it's absolutely not.
Is our town council involved in this process in any way?
I have got a fact sheet from our town council as well as West Newbury's town council and town councils from here to Western Mass.
I bet, I'm sure.
And most align on most things.
Good.
And then there's a lot they don't, or they just go, we just don't know, uh, which is, you know, the answer that we're coming across.
State just created a lot of land loads.
It created a lot of land loads and created a lot of lawsuits, um, and some housing. So that's good. So conditions placed, uh, can you place conditions on an OSRD or other subdivision that would prohibit ADUs? Again, that's a, a question maybe, but again, if I have something like Katy Lane and we say, you know, no ADUs on it, are we violating state law? Maybe. So, and then um, so we are asking if uh, EO HLC will provide guidance, which hopefully they will, and then ADU be placed in a zone that does not single-family? We talked about that with the business zone, uh, if there's a pre-existing non-conforming single-family uh, on the lot. And then we've got, like I said, I've probably got another couple hundred questions from across the state on this that where we're trying to get guidance at the state level. And this really isn't fair to throw on town council and go, hey, take your best guess uh, with no, no real backing uh, court cases. So we're trying to get EO HLC and if not them, then something from the governor's office to say, okay, this, this is what I mean. Uh, whether we'll get anything from them or not, where we don't know. I think we got good chance with EO HLC though.
And if somebody has a subdivision that has covenances that says they, no ADUs, does that bypass that?
Don't know.
Sounds like, sounds like probably.
Yeah. I mean, it, you know-
If it's by right, then things that would conflict would probably be superseded.
I, I would think the law would supersede a condition.
Yeah.
But I don't know. You know, I, I am certainly no lawyer. Um, I'm just the guy that gets to wear the two hats and now doesn't know what most of the words mean in the regulations that I, I enforce.
How many, how many ADUs do we have in town roughly now?
Not a ton. Uh, probably a dozen or so.
And so this doesn't, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of uh, interaction with folks on these issues, you know, just as in the day-to-day as of now before this all happens.
Right. I, I, you know, for the most part, ADUs up until now with the owner occupancy requirement in one of them, it's really minimal for impact. Um, here we don't allow detached in West Newbury, we just started. Um, I've, I've had three applicants since we put it in place.
Sure.
Um, and again, they're all pretty benign, sitting in the backyard, they're not too bad. My concern is things of like Brad was bringing up, if I'm a developer or someone that just wants to buy up properties and rent them, here's a great opportunity. I buy a single family or maybe a two-family, put an ADU out back, now I got three rental units.
Right.
Um, and the limit doesn't stop there. Like Havel, they allow, I think it's up to either a three or four family where you can convert the garage now to an ADU.
And there are no developer restrictions and anything like that's in any of the laws?
Nope. And then the other questions that come up, well, can you conduit? So I do this and I have two towns with two differing opinions already. Um, and part of the problem with that is typically zoning can't regulate ownership. And by saying you can't conduit, feels a lot like regulating the ownership. Um, some were arguing that it has to be under a single owner. Well, if I have a single owner of the property and am selling off portions, although the owner still holds the, the property is-
Or if your owner might be a trust or if you, there's a, it just, it seems like you could really go down the rabbit hole.
Yeah. And, and those are the questions we just don't know. Um, and I think demographics will have uh, something to do with that too. I don't see a West Newbury where you're buying, you know, a, a fairly expensive property and developing that to have rental properties any more than you would now, where Groveland's a bit more affordable. I, I, I think we're, we could be more susceptible, um, you know, to someone coming in and buying it as a, a development property or rental property. But don't know. We'll, we'll, we'll see. And that's some of the information EO HLC wants us to give them as this goes forward to continue feeding them, like what impacts this is having on which communities? Um, and is there going to be some sort of disparity between a wealthy community and a less wealthy community?
Hmm.
You know, do you see it happening in Bauxford? I got two acre zoning and I'm, I've got these, you know, a huge house. Do I need an ADU? You know, or if I'm struggling to pay my, my mortgage, do I throw a rental unit out back? I don't know. I mean, typically the people that are buying-
You have to be able to afford to put it up too.
Yeah, the building cost.
You got to build the building cost of a 900 square foot home.
There's companies out there that have popped up overnight, um, that's-
They will front the cost, I'm sure.
That specifically build ADUs. Uh, they come in with your pre-cast concrete forms, uh, only dig down the two feet, do a, there's a method where you can dig down two feet, go out two feet with insulation, get your frost protection, do your ICFs, pour concrete in what looks like little styrofoam Legos, drop your ADU on it and you're up and running in probably a couple of weeks.
So on an ADU, wouldn't need frost wells?
You need frost protection. So there's a way to do that without going down the four feet. Oh, you, you know that. Your, your, your buildings have that.
That would be a cold storage building and not on a-
It applies for both fro- you know, frost protections, frost protection. So yeah, that's, that's a little, little scary. And then granted, I just got one in, in West Newbury, the 868 square foot ADU uh, construction cost is I think almost 700,000.
Trash my hole, huh?
I, I looked at it. I, you know, we called the contractor just to say, you know, is it an error? He said, nope. So I don't know. I can't wait to see it. It's gonna be fantastic.
That's where you got to stop going up at seven fifty.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's roughly like eight hundred bucks a square foot. So, so. I don't know what that looks like.
Like in appliances?
I am, haven't got there yet.
Zero refrigerate?
It should be interesting, but, um, yeah, I I wish I had a lot more answers than I had questions. But again, I I thought it was imperative that now that we've sat and kind of decided that the better route is to have something for the spring to give us as much protection as we can and hope we get enough answers to do at least close to a correct bylaw and then amend it later if need be.
So this, this is a great update. So thank you.
Sure.
So path forward, this is the new, gonna be, this is the new, as of two-two, the new ADU definition. We currently in our bylaws have what will be an outdated or exempt ADU, be conflicting ADU that we need to take care of.
We didn't allow detached ADUs.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So and and that's it. We do, we need to clean up our existing language or separate, if we want to continue with anything larger than nine hundred square feet, we can leave that language for ADUs nine oh one to, you know, whatever we allow a thousand. And call the ADU something else, you know, a large ADU, expanded ADU, whatever you want to call it, and then have your nine hundred and less meet the state definitions. Or like I said, we could just erase what we have, go with the state and go from there. And anything above the nine hundred requires special permit. So there's a, there's a lot of, um, ways to look at it.
So do you recommend that we wait until you get more answers from the state before we make any type of?
Oh, absolutely.
Definitive of saying, let's keep the.
It's by right.
No, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about our own bylaw that we're gonna eventually have to either address or just nix it and go with whatever they say, but we want to see what their answers are.
What was the cutoff to get something on town warrant, really, right?
Right.
Yeah. And again, I'm hoping by end of year, uh, we'll have info. Or at least enough that we can start pointing where we want to go. Uh, this was really more just a heads up. This is out there. There's a lot of questions, a lot of confusion. We're gonna have to do something. The general consensus, when talking with, uh, the town administrator was, and like, you know, and talking to myself, was that we should do something rather than nothing to be as proactive as we can and try to avoid as much confusion as we can. It's probably not going to be perfect first go around, but, um, you know, I, I think it's worth taking.
Ostensibly in compliance versus something that's clearly not.
If we're ninety percent.
In the right direction, for sure.
You know, ninety percent is better than having nothing.
How much interest have you seen in this?
Tons. Across the board, lots of calls, lots of awareness, and that's with the limited exposure it's had so far. I think once the contractors start hearing about it and people realize it's a means for additional income, we're gonna see a significant amount more. You know, and not just for income, but stuff that we've, the whole reason we created our, our ADU bylaw anyway was to have, you know, uh, senior family members, you know, let the kids move into the house, they move out back, or kids get out of college, they got someplace to go, something to invest in instead of rental. Uh, I I think it's on a lot of levels, awesome and has a lot of benefits if it's not abused. And some, you know, I get the detached piece, you know, I I adore my mother-in-law. If she was in a detached unit in the backyard, that that's cool. Being attached and just, you know, there, there's a little separation that's needed sometimes. And I can say that about my father, too, as well as my mother-in-law. So it's not just a marriage thing, but, you know, and I think a lot of parents feel the same way. They don't want their kids forever living in the house and having that unit in the backyard is certainly gives that little bit of separation of their space versus our space. But anyway, that's neither here nor there.
So you think, you think coming back sometime around, around the holidays?
I figure as info comes in and it's worth scheduling something, I'll schedule it. Uh, if it's something, a brief memo or an update, I can always shoot something in, but, um, I, you know, these meetings are long enough without me rambling on about ADUs, so.
This was helpful. We appreciate it.
It, it's, again, there's a lot of effort going into trying to clarify this on all different levels, uh, planners association, your building associations, I'm sure, you know, uh, town managers, administrators, mayors are all.
All doing.
Getting into this. I know all the law firms are jumping to try and figure out who's gonna be the premier expert on, on ADUs. There's a lot of interest. So I think we, we should have a ton more information in the coming months. I don't know if we'll have more clarification, but we'll have more information.
But at least we know what we can go on.
Yeah.
What we have to do forward. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, battery energy storage systems. Uh, there is a typo in the thresholds. Need to be updated with the current standards. This is just kind of a discussion. I don't have anything here that shows that. Rebecca, do you?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Question?
Um, we're talking about the energy storage systems. It's just a type, the typo fix for the updated thresholds with the current standards. It's just an update. We don't have to do anything.
Yes.
It's just, you're just letting us know.
Yes, correct.
So that's just in a food for thought. That's all. Just change. Uh, next up is the section three A zoning, MBTA zoning. It's in your pack.
So there wasn't any more or there was more?
That's the affordable, right? Yep. Sections forty, that's forty A.
So you'll see that in your packet, there was a presentation that was provided to the select board back in June. It was with our consultant, Emily, and his, with, and his associates. Um, we had received a community compact grant to have her services to help guide us through the process and come up with zoning that we can present. We must comply with the MBTA zoning regulations by the end of the calendar year, two thousand twenty-five. So we are looking to put forward zoning for the April twenty annual town meeting. And if adjustments need to be made or then something happens and we are unsuccessful, uh, take that under advisement and see maybe potentially if we have another opportunity to present it to the town in the, for a fall town meeting. Uh, Groveland doesn't typically have fall town meetings, but we would be able to call a special town meeting to allow for that to go back before the board. So as you'll see in that presentation, she provides a, a lot of information about what is required under the regulations, what that looks like in comparison to some of the housing stock that we currently have here in Groveland. I think one of the biggest takeaways from that particular presentation was that looking at some of the units that we already have in place and looking at the density requirements, some of those units actually meet those density requirements. So something that we could consider when exploring how we go about zoning that district. Uh, you know, a lot of the beginning conversations were focused on taking a larger parcel and allocating that as our designated zone, being that it meets the modeling and the criteria that was put forward by the state. But after more recent conversations and feedback within the community about how some of these developments are really changing the characteristics of the community and taking that feedback into consideration, we've had a lot of conversations with the consultant now focused on maybe trying to scale that back and, and to put it into context with the landscape of Groveland. So looking at more cottage-like style developments and smaller areas that we could allow for this amount of density and not necessarily consider a large apartment-type complex that would take or would give us the density that would be required under the regulations. So we're currently working with the consultant to get that finalized and then that will be presented for public engagement in, uh, October, so just next month. So we'll have some more information about what's being proposed, what those options are, what they look like. And then we'll also start to explore some of the actual language that we'll be putting forward. So that will be happening in October and then we will also have the consultant come back before the planning board as well as the select board to provide more information later in the winter. And then potentially again in January to make sure that it's a very, um, robust public engagement so that we're informing the residents, we're informing all of the, uh, required appointed and elected officials so that you're fully aware of what we're trying to put forward to, um, achieve compliance with the regulations. So that is a good starting point, that presentation. It is kind of a boot camp one-on-one type of thing. Um, but if there's any additional questions, I'm happy to answer them or now and or at a later date. We can also have the consultant answer any other, uh, technical questions as well, uh, if there's anything that the board has further.
What happened to Milton lawsuit? Anything yet?
Uh, from the last I read, that they're still litigating. I don't believe that there was, um, a decision, but I I honestly don't know.
And are there, aren't there multiple towns that are involved?
Milton was the first.
So I know Milton had moved forward, but the more other recent one I I had, I had learned about was, uh, um, there is a, a local group that was suing the municipality for their proposal. I'm not sure the specifics in what community, but there's been a lot of, um, angst among the recent regulations and how the state has put these forward for municipalities to essentially bypass what they have currently and comply.
Has anyone read through this entire packet yet and had any questions on it or?
I have. I definitely want to go, re-go through it again because there's a lot there, but.
I think it makes sense if you, if the idea is that the consultants are still working on getting kind of what our plan is gonna be, um, it seems premature to start, you know, digging into nuts and bolts until, until that happens.
Yeah.
I agree. I mean, I think it's definitely something we need to keep a wary eye on and, you know, make sure we have a, some kind of working path towards it.
Yeah.
Last thing we want is time for town warrant and we haven't, we're not ready for it.
Right.
Because it's, it's coming. We just need to know what, what we're gonna do about it. We need to have the knowledge first.
Yeah. And in the Milton, the Milton thing may not resolve itself until, you know, for years if the litigation goes on.
Yeah.
I thought they were gonna have a rule in this fall. That's what it sounded like.
Well, there may be a ruling, but, you know.
It'll be an appeal, everything else.
Well, and, you know, lots of subsequent other, you know, maybe ancillary rulings and things like that, so.
One of the more helpful things that I heard from feedback from some of the other communities that are dealing with this, obviously because they feel as though they're being forced to, is that, you know, there's a lot of taxpayer dollars that would be required for us to fight this on a legal level.
Sure.
Um, in addition to the amount of grant money that the town has been able to receive in the last five years through all of the programs that the state has afforded us. And now to take that away leaves us with, um, a void, considering all the progress we've been able to make. So one of the statements has been, you know, let's see what happens with those municipalities that are taking legal action and let them put that forward and see what that, that, that brings forward. Because then if it turns out that it's illegal and that we don't have to comply, then we call a town meeting and we change our bylaw and we no longer have to allow for it.
So basically Milton is financing our, uh, our inquiry into what, to what's going on. And we should let them continue to do that without getting into the fray with Groveland tax, taxpayer money.
And that's just been some of the feedback. Some of the other communities have mentioned is just that it, you know, we have small budgets, especially in a town like Groveland, and to take a lot of that legal monies that we have allocated, which is a small thirty thousand dollars, and, and put that towards fighting a, a much larger battle eliminates the protections that we have for some of the other more pressing matters that we have before us.
Sure.
But that's not to say that we shouldn't consider it as well. It's just something that I took as a took, a takeaway from some of the conversations I've been hearing around the state.
You know, on the flip side of that, if we're not in compliance by end of calendar twenty-five, there's repercussions to state funding, right?
That's correct.
And that, that was a question. What, what do we lose? What do we, what are we gaining by having it and what are we losing by not? Do you have numbers at all?
I don't have numbers. I have numbers in terms of the grants that we've applied for and the amount of money that we've been able to receive from the programs that they would no longer allow us to apply for. So I can send those over to you, Mr. Chair, and you can disperse to the board, but it, it's, it's over two million dollars.
Yeah. And I think that's a good number to, it's a good number to know for the townspeople to know, like, okay, if we, if we lose this, this is what, and these are the things that we were able to do with these monies on a regular basis, so.
Well, will we survive without the two million dollars in the last five years?
Well, then you can't just focus on that because the meeting that, uh, me and Rebecca attended on Zoom, one of the other things, other things that they focused on was also pulling chapter seventy funds as well as chapter ninety funds, although it was not specifically listed there. It doesn't prevent them from doing so. And the chapter seventy funds, I believe, uh, Penticic, it's, uh, almost fourteen million. So forty percent of that would be ours, if I understand that correctly.
But do we, that's always been the question. Do we get our fair share of chapter seventy funds?
Well, whether we do or not, they give us nothing.
If they, right. Fair share versus zero, right.
Forty percent of that fourteen million.
Let's ask the finance board what they think about that.
The, the other thing is, is if you read through the suit, um, and I'm no attorney by far, but what a lot of the suit is stating is the, um, by the state mandate doesn't make it mandatory the way that it's written. Um, all they can do it is take away that funding. And that's what they're pursuing, from what I gather from the, from the suit. And that doesn't mean that the state won't turn around and rewrite it so they can maintain it, just like the legalization of the, the, uh, zoning for marijuana medicinal. We have no say. And it's clearly stated as we have no say. The accessory dwelling unit, clearly stated, we don't have any say. So whether it's put off another five, six years, that's really what it's gonna depend on.
Yeah, but look at how the state mandate stuff. They just throw things at you and they don't give you a clear definition of what the intent or how to handle this.
Well, right. And I mean, you know, is Groveland the template town that should be fighting the fight for all the towns in the state with it, with a twenty-one million dollar budget, you know?
Yeah.
Should Havel maybe weigh in on it with a budget ten times our size? You know, should, you know, so again, I mean, it's, it's nice to, to have principles and think, yuck, you know, the state's getting us. But, you know, at the same time, if you look at it in the, in the larger sense and think, okay, what are we actually giving up by complying with this? And if the answer is, as we go through our consultants and we go through our business, nothing in substance, then there's no reason to sacrifice at least two million and maybe more. And litigation costs that could be hundreds of thousands of dollars easily and, and a, and a litigation that goes on for years, maybe decades.
I tell you, even if we don't enter any legal battle as a, as a community ourselves, if we wait for Milton or whoever is pressing the case on behalf of, you know, the Commonwealth essentially, um, we still end up paying the fiscal penalty if we're not in compliance as well, even if we're, even if we are waiting, because it could be court cases, appeals, you know, so it could be, could drag on for years.
It doesn't seem like the burden for complying, at least for this point, at this part, is something that is going to be, uh, a significant detriment to the town.
And it's not a housing production mandate.
Right.
Just zoning at this point in time.
Right.
I would still suggest that, you know, everybody says all in. I still think we can dissect this and say, what impact to fire? Well, how many medical calls? When we hit a thousand, it's two more, right? Two more full timers. What impact to police? Is the tax revenue going to be enough generated to support the town?
Right. But, 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 but again, like, like I said, hundred percent agree with you. We should, we need, we need to have all the aspects so we have a proper way in whether or not we want to do. But we need to work towards doing, getting ready to propose things because if, if at the end of the day, we're not ready for town warrant and then we're not in compliance, what we're gonna lose potentially through grant money from the state outweighs exponentially what the tax burden would be.
So, yeah, this is.
It's in the order of millions.
This is a phase, we have to kind of look at it as a phased approach because this is only the zoning aspect of it.
Yeah.
And we can do whatever we need to for zoning, but the housing is a different aspect and we can put the, the conditions on that as well. The zoning is one aspect and the housing is, is another.
And again, the way, I think the best way to look at it, to frame it, is to think about it in terms of having options versus being pigeonholed into a particular situation. We want ourselves to be able to, we, we could at any point say, pull the plug and say, okay, we're out, we're gonna fight this. But, but if we don't do the things that can give us the option to, you know, comply with compliances maybe not even very difficult, then that takes that option off the table, which we would certainly want to have the option. And we might not use it, but it's better to have more options than have less options.
And I still caution the board to take a look at the whole picture.
Of course.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I think we start putting things in place to get that information, right?
Right.
I think we take this time to schedule time with the chief, with Kevin, with everyone we need to get in front, in front of us to say, here's what that complete impact is.
You know, I know you can't ask the school, but what's it impacted the school?
Right, yeah, absolutely.
Cost per child, seven, was it seventeen thousand per child?
And I. I think that's our thing. We need to be, we're responsible.
Right.
To make sure that we are, have the knowledge and the guidance, the proper guidance to go the right way and.
I say, yeah, I think we take this time to do our due diligence to make sure we have that complete picture.
Right. And at the same.
Hundred ninety-two, potentially a hundred thirty, potentially Garrison. I mean, the stuff that we can control, I think we have to like dissect the whole thing.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely.
Nobody disagrees with that.
Hey, anything else? There's no, there's no vote or anything, this is just a update. All right. And last thing on these zoning changes for town meeting is we need to make a change of a, what is it, find and, find and replace on all of our documents to change selectmen to select board.
So this was put forward as a citizen's position, a citizen's petition at our last town meeting and it passed, however, there was a failure to follow process. And as part of any zoning change, you are required to have a public hearing in the planning board to make a recommendation for town meeting, and that was not done. So the one that asked to change selectmen to select board as part of the general bylaw was approved and adopted and has been implemented. It's only the zoning bylaw that has not been changed because of the fact that we did not hold a public hearing and have that through the planning board. So it's more of a formality than anything else because it was approved at town meeting. The townspeople voted to allow the change. It, it's just a procedural matter.
So what's, so what's the procedural fix?
Say, do we need to officially open for, for public comment?
So we'll propose a, a, the warrant will, so, excuse me, so we'll have a public hearing. It will be noticed in the Eagle Tribune fourteen days prior to the public hearing. You'll open the public hearing, you'll allow for public comment, you'll close the public hearing, you'll make a recommendation to town meeting. That information will be on the warrant and they'll be able to vote.
So it has to go on the next warrant?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I mean, I would, I would say, is there anyone that has any objection to, you know, moving that process forward so we can get that?
I love a good public hearing. I'll remind you of that in two weeks.
We're, we have, we're doing it anyway, yeah. All right. Good there. Vote, zoning changes, done. Three oh one Main Street. We are going to discuss up, the update regarding the Mass DOT approvals for the project.
Applicant has received their access permit through Mass DOT for utilization of the curb cut at three oh one Main Street. As part of that in your packet, you'll see that there are conditions for that approval, one of which is a no left-hand turn. So they will be able to move forward with the conditions of the permit that the planning board approved. They are going to need to file with the Conservation Commission. They have taken steps to communicate that with the commission as well as the chair to get that process underway. But there are some other outstanding items in the decision that you'll see that they need to come back to the planning board with to finalize those. So we just wanted to make sure that you are aware that the access permit was approved since it's been a very long time and it's a very lengthy process for the applicant and the state. So it's just something we wanted to make you aware of because that will be coming before you within the next few months.
Miracles happen, huh? So, I, I got a question. Who's doing the curb cut? Do the applicants have to do the curb cut of Mass DOT?
Yes, they have to, and if you look at the actual language, it's, it's very detailed about when they can do the construction, what needs to be done, how it needs to be done.
Can't do anything during the wintertime, it's, it's like a six-month. Someone has to be on site to watch, maintain that. So it looks like they're cutting, and I can't tell with the, the very end. They're cutting, so it's a two-lane, right? It shows the solid white lines on the outside and then solid yellow in the middle. They're cutting further north on Main Street. They're not going, so that crosswalk, it will not be affected. I would have assumed that they would have had to go further, but now it's going to be open. The exposure of whatever the address is on the post office of the corner of that building is actually going to be open to that street so someone could actually come in and clip the building or whatever. That looks like it goes in beyond the front of the building. So I was interested, I was like, wow, okay, that's the way they're going. I was shocked because how are they going to move a crosswalk at the set of lights? I didn't think how they were going to do that. The other thing I, I noticed was the no left turn. The, and it shows on the map, it's R three two, and I had to try to find where R three two was. It's across the street, that sign, the placement of the sign for no left turn. So it looks like it's coming from, it says existing do not enter sign that's there on the opposite side coming out of the public.
So when you're pulling out, you're looking right at it, this has no left turn.
Right. On the outside of the street.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if you have a vehicle.
If you, if you have a, a, a straight truck there, you're not going to see it.
You're not going to see it.
Yeah.
So I, so I was kind of interested to see how they have that placement. There's a right turn only, but the no left turn, is that facing them or is it on both sides? Are they not allowed to take a left-hand turn out of, what's the name of the complex? Where the laundromat is?
Yeah.
It does not impact them.
No, it only impacts three oh one.
Just three oh one.
Well, the no left turn sign is on there, that side of the street.
Well, so you can see it when you're coming out.
But if there's a truck there, you're not going to be able to see it.
There, there's no way.
I just was into, I was like.
If there's a truck there, you're not going to take the left turn.
If there's a truck there, yeah, you're not taking a left turn anyway. But are you not allowed to take a, a left-hand turn from that? There's no, no left-hand turn.
Because right as of now, you can do whatever you want.
Right, coming out of the one-way.
It's a tough intersection.
It's a tough intersection.
Talking about coming out of the one-way?
Yeah, coming out, yeah.
There's, there was a sign there for no left-hand turn coming out from the laundromat.
There is?
There was.
There was, okay.
It was run over, I don't believe it's been replaced.
So they're talking about three oh one Main or the.
Yeah, but he was asking about the cross street.
I've done with the laundromat is and the.
Oh yeah, there's always been a, you can't, yeah, there's always been a no left turn out of that one.
Okay. So there should be one on, there should be a no left turn on both sides of that side.
You can't make the applicant put a no left turn on for somebody else.
No, I, I, yeah, I get it. But it'd be easier to put the, the back one on.
After they put it up.
Once they put it up, yeah.
Maybe the highway department can just.
I'm sure that they will work to do rectify that if it was in fact a sign that was there because it isn't within their right of way.
Yeah. Cool. I, I was surprised.
Let's not say persistence doesn't pay off.
What's that?
So let's not say persistence doesn't pay off.
I do have a question in terms of what they're going to do to the assessment of the property. Maybe it was something we can ask Julie, because if that property had been assessed with that building not having been accessible because of the way that that curb cut was done, now it is accessible, what's it going to do for the assessment?
So the assessment won't change per se. So currently the owner has sought abatement for his taxes on the property because of the fact that it's not being utilized. So one, he will now no longer qualify for the abatement. And then when a building permit is issued, they will then have the ability to
Reevaluate that.
Reevaluate the property and be taxed accordingly. But currently the owner is seeking abatements for that property use because it's not, it's not able, and it's not being used.
Well, now it's been approved, it's now deemed fit for use, right?
I'm sorry?
So now that DOT approved it, it's now officially deemed fit for use?
Well, he's got to apply for the building permit.
Exactly, there's some things that need to be done prior to.
Has he applied or has he suggested what he's going to?
Not that I know, like I said, I know that they were talking to the Conservation Commission about getting before them to do some of the changes because they are within two hundred feet of the riverfront and would require filing with the Conservation Commission.
They were talking about deforestation around that.
Yeah, I remember, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just all bamboo and not weed, I mean.
Yeah, and you definitely should read the decision because it talks about water runoff. There's a lot of stipulations behind it and there's going to be a significant cost to do this.
Did it close down any of the lanes?
What's that?
They can't close them down any of the lanes.
Yeah, there's, yes, and it's on the owner. And is it, is it going to be, who knows? So whether they still do it. He may have got the approval, but whether the cost is in it for the owner of the property to actually perform that.
Just the ADA stuff, the.
There's a lot of rules behind it, sidewalks, the wheelchairs.
But the curb cut's going to happen regardless?
It's all on the owner. It's all, everything's on the owner.
On the owner, he would have to take his, you know, permit and.
Yeah.
But he's going to follow this.
To do so if he so chooses for this use.
Is there a timeline that, under which that would expire?
I didn't see an expiration.
I hadn't, I, I'd have to take another look at the Mass DOT document. I'm sure they have some type of, because we, I know that we've had access permits for doing the sidewalk project that we did. And I know that I've had to go through extensions to figure out some final details. So there should be a, an expiration date for the permit. But you do have the ability to extend.
Oh, Saturday, August ninth, twenty twenty-five permit expiration. Date of issue, August ninth, twenty twenty-four, so he's, he has one year to comply.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Solid.
All right. All right. Good update. Minutes, approval of the July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four and September tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes. I have to expect that everyone here has already reread the July sixteenth and September sixteen, and July sixteenth, September tenth meetings.
They were the best minutes I've ever read.
What's that?
Best minutes I've ever read.
You wish they lasted hours. The September, the September one was just, just recent, right? There was, there's a lot of back and forth on there. But I did a quick scan. Everything seemed to be in order, so I'm saying a motion to accept the minutes. Does it have to be separate, can they be together?
I mean, you could vote on them separately.
Separately, okay.
I will make a motion to accept approval of minutes for July sixteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
I will make a motion to approve the September tenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So moved. Thank you, appreciate it. Any other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of the posting?
Nothing came through the office.
Excellent, I like that. All right, well, good there. And next meeting is October fifteenth.
So I will make note, just so the board is aware, the select board also has a meeting on Tuesday, the fifteenth, because Indigenous Peoples' Day is on the fourteenth.
Columbus Day.
So I'm not.
Tuesday's our day.
Sure what room you'll be in.
That would be a problem, being that that's public hearing.
Yes, but we'll figure out which room you're in. So we'll figure out if you're in the public safety or if you're in this room.
Oh, okay.
So you will have access, so the public will have access, you will have, be able to, to hold your meeting. It's just whether or not they'll be over here or you'll be over there.
I think since they're trying to meet on our day, we get perspective of the room, right?
To what, is there a difference in?
As a right.
Capacity?
I think it's a, a little bit smaller, but not substantial.
That's a little bit small, okay. Because that's the only concern, I think we're going to have a decent crowd again and it was full. So I just, that's the only thing I would caution, is making sure that we have enough for the capacity.
We can do it outside, it's nice.
Do it outside, yeah, do it under the tent.
Pentecost, which is a community use, right? Can you use a Pentecost auditorium?
All right, so next meeting is October fifteenth. Are we doing, and we can, I don't know if we have to talk about it or not. The fifteenth. So are we doing? We can't, November, we go, so we go back to November, right? Because the fifteenth is the one meeting we have. November fifth, obviously we cannot meet on the first November, on the first week, it's election day. So we'd probably have to go to the twelfth, which is the day after Veterans Day. Just to let you guys know. You guys availability, we'll talk about, we can talk about it now because it comes quick.
I'm available for the twelfth.
Twelfth should be, should be. Chris is looking.
I should be available.
Okay.
Yeah, I should be.
So we can make it, make it official.
Unless I'm on mission.
November meeting, the first meeting will be on the twelfth. We'll probably need it. Cool.
All right.
Entertaining motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at eight twenty-five.